I'll open the meeting of board of selection March twenty fifth. It's six point four P M.
Okay.
Budget hearings.
The United States of America, a sovereign republic who represents what is an indivisible, but every.
Now, go for the next one. Correct.
This is the budget hearing. So first up is historical commission up by twenty five.
There will be nobody present tonight from the historical commission because their budget has remained steady. There's no change. No. They're happy with that and they will in the meantime be working on the arch with the green hall cemetery. And they're coming along very well with that.
If I may, Don, just so you know, the budget's fifteen hundred for the historical commission.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred has been for quite a few years.
Past several years.
Just so you know, the amount.
Yep. Next up, Board of Assessors up by twenty five.
Some increases sent out. This is over. Are you supposed to ask me questions, Alan, or am I?
Um, I think between the board of selectmen and myself, they're just informal session.
Line by line.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, um, the way the part-time wages, we'll just leave where it is. Stipends, same thing. So the contracts that sixteen hundred dollars we had for the current year was for putting the property record cards online. The vision because we had some other departments complaining they didn't have access to property record cards or building information. So we have put the valuations as of the tax bill out into the main hall somewhere. I don't know where Andrea put it, but it's sent, you know, by owner name, by street address and back. But so anyways, from the time we got that number last year and hadn't implemented it, that price went up to twenty one hundred dollars a year. Um, so that's why we submitted an amended budget. So the good news here is for the first year, they told them they would give it to us for half price. Okay, but for the remaining year, it's.
So twenty four is going to be eight hundred.
Yeah, well, no, it'll be half of the twenty one hundred.
Twenty one, okay, but you have half of the sixteen.
Half of the twenty one. For the, we're not gonna, so I don't, yeah. So we can't implement it for the prior year because we just, they don't have a schedule for us. So it'll be fiscal year twenty five.
But you do think twenty one hundred is the right number for twenty five?
For the fall, no, it'll be half fat for the fall for fiscal year twenty five.
Oh, so we can cut that in half?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but for future years, it's going to be at least that much money now everything goes up. So, um, as of today, that was the deal on the phone, so. You can adjust that down to. One one oh five oh. Okay. Um, computer license fee and vision again, big increase. Four hundred and ninety-two dollars, that's the contract price. Everything goes up. We have some software enhancements and all of that coming out, so that's the new price. Um, education, um, I'd like to bring that back down to last fiscal year, twenty-four budget number of five hundred. Take the two fifty off, okay? Um, we had put a lot in there last year to train Andrea and, uh, this, we won't, we won't be needing that this year. I'll tell you more about.
Okay, I was gonna ask you, all right, good.
Okay. Fifty-six dollars for advertising, we'll just maintain that. The supplies, there was a, so with Andrea, we went through like everything in the office. You know, the prices of toner, the price of paper, well, not paper because you're still supplying that, right?
Yeah, I buy it in bulk for the.
For the total town hall, okay, so is everything else in the town hall on the? I think toners was a really big.
Don, if I may ask a question?
Yep.
There had been a lot of discussion earlier in the year about centralizing office supplies or doing something, combining some of them. Did that get tabled for this year or?
It used to do that, but now we get told to split it all.
I didn't know which department. I didn't know how far that had gone if it was including assessors, only in the town hall, okay?
Not the other departments.
Okay, I didn't know if you're bringing them in or not, so I still had it as a question, not mine.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
So only in the town hall, we were having our own budget for supplies.
Supplies, yeah.
That would happen. So because no one really kept track of like what the costs were, we had to go out and, or what should we go to Aragel for over the years? So, you know, we had to get a price on Post-it notes and manila folders. So we use a lot of the ink, you know, the pens, the, um, the whiteout, the three-ring binders, which we use a lot of, um, the hanging folders, a new calculator, because there was one really old one in the office, we picked the cheapest one of twenty-five bucks. He has a computer privacy screen here for a hundred and ten dollars, really not sure what that is. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, it's just this, um, black piece of.
Well, people can't see over your shoulder.
Over your shoulders, see what you're looking at.
Oh, I see. Well, you know what? We don't need that because we're going to change the office. We're going to relocate the desk so no one could stand behind you. It's a, that's, that's a bad setup.
Yeah.
I've never worked in an office where somebody can be in your back. That's, so anyways, we'll, we'll get that done. Um, printery was, of course, our biggest one and the envelopes, um, we go through like five hundred a year, four hundred and fifty dollars. It's ridiculous, but anyway, so, um, so she had fourteen hundred and fifty, we put in twelve hundred. So we made that a thousand. I think we could sweep by, but really having no idea of how, what the whole expense budget was and it sounds reasonable, but.
Is uncertain as you sound. And also, would you fact you had fourteen hundred, you already cut it back to twelve?
Yeah.
I would maybe just leave it there and if it's, if it's, if you're short two hundred, don't spend it, don't, if you don't need it, it'll come back to the town, Don. I mean, that's the kind of two hundred dollar difference that just doesn't matter too much. I'd leave it there so you don't have a problem next year. Would be, again, my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, registry deeds, no increase there. Uh, postage, um, she put in for another hundred dollars because of the process stamps. Um, and the others, let's see. So computers, the supplies were nothing because we've taken that out. Uh, dues, um, an increase of thirty-five dollars for M A O. So we have an adjusted total there of something.
I get this.
Okay.
Opened your question on the money.
So.
Oh, okay.
No, I thought you said you're okay with the money. I, yeah.
Yeah. Ellen, do you have anything on the money?
The only other question I had, Priscilla, was the, um, revaluation, cyclical inspection, excuse me. I'm sorry, sore throat tonight. Uh, cyclical inspections were about three thousand and thirty-seven hundred. And I believe you left them flat to the prior year. No change. Is that, is that?
It's not your kind of contract, so that, that's good for.
Okay, I, I get, I just, I, you had it on kind of as a below-the-line item.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure because there isn't actually, in our system, we keep a separate budget for those two items.
Okay, yeah.
And just, just want to make sure it was not changing.
Yeah. Nope. No change.
Okay, that was the only question I had, Don. Thank you.
In the auditor's report, it said we're carrying too much money in the gold.
Uh, so the overlay we increased because of the year, prior year problem with, um, having to almost agree. Um, our only senior was the accountant to, um, was able to reimburse a, it was a tax title write-off, I believe, of like fifteen thousand dollars that saved the bank. Um, so we had that, that log home valuation problem, which was there. So we wanted to put that money back in. You know, it, it really, it's a good, we save, it's a savings account. Um, you don't want to be below the mark on there.
What's in there? How much is in there?
Well, it's sixty. Be sixty.
Yeah, that, Priscilla and I talked about it earlier.
That's what we put in.
It's been twenty pretty consistently.
Yeah.
Was sort of the numbers that was, that the target range for years. And then the sixty came about because of the log cabin. Uh, I, I guess the only question I'd have, Priscilla, is, is the sixty the right number? Could it be forty or twenty-five instead of sixty? I mean, I'm just, I, I don't know how you came up with the sixty, so that was my one question after we talked.
So what we were doing was looking at the five-year average.
Okay.
And where all, all that money came out, we would just put it back in. So, um, I'd be happy to look at those numbers.
Could you take a look just to see? I mean, because it would fall into revenue if we took that out. It's where we'd show we have some additional revenue for the, for the budget.
In the past, when there's been a buildup in over, if there has been.
Name, please.
Oh, excuse me, Claire Hunter from Lincoln Road. I know in the past, we had some tight years, remember going to the assessors and they would examine the overlay account and say we can release some funds. So it was always a nice thing to, you know, to fall back on, not only for the assessors in case they had a difficulty, but us as a town, and they thought they could release funds.
My, my only question on it was, the auditors brought it up, we're going through a second, a second audit in April.
Yeah.
They may bring it up again, I just want to have an answer.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sure. I'll, I'll take a look at that number and see if there's anything we can do.
Okay.
Yeah. Number.
Uh, Don, my only question is, um, it, we are going up on part-time wages, it looks like from twenty-four budget was twenty-one or five, twenty-five, oh, we're not. With the principal assessor's rate being looked at recently, is that reasonable that we would find somebody in the existing rate that we've had for fiscal year twenty-four?
So, uh, right now, I have a closed contract um, for just under that amount. So that would provide somebody here one day a week, eight to twelve hours, doing all of the accessory administrative work. So there'd be no need to hire a clerk, just one person with all the credentials. Looking to before, so the thing is, in order for regional, regional resource group is a note that, you know, that many of the towns around here even was, which I thought, and they had already told me. I had eight people call me last week, I can't hire anybody, but you felt really bad, you know? I put in a lot of years there, so anyways, he pulled some strings, Lester signed a contract, um, which was really big, that's like half the money, the contract, and if we sign, we're the other third. And Brookfield needs to sign. Brookfield doesn't have a town administrator right now and it looks like nobody wants to make any decisions over there, so. Um, I'm not sure how long that's going to be, but he thinks he has somebody that can temporarily fill in. It won't be the person that will be the new buyer, but, um, she's the person he's recommended is very capable. So for that kind of money, and we have enough money to pay for the remainder of the year, it's doable. So as soon as, um, as soon as we hear that something's happened, um, when Peter gets back from vacation next Monday, he'll take a look at the contract. Maybe we could schedule some time to bring that in here on next Monday, if you're available, um, so that you can start to look at that contract. Keep our fingers crossed.
That's great.
Yeah.
There really is, that's great.
Yeah.
With those.
I know. Hopefully you can reduce the education number a little more.
Do you have anything else on the budget?
So I am keeping the office open.
So that.
I have a paperwork slide. That'll be what I said last week.
Thank you very much.
Or whatever the other? Alan, you all set?
I'm all set, yeah, thank you. That's nice to see a few reductions, a lot of increases and a lot of budgets, so.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Next, we have the council on aging up by twenty-five budget.
Ready when you, Claire, enter that Lincoln Road, ready when you are. Uh, the first thing I want to go to is I want to go to the nutrition program. That's a fee that we get from elder services and I had contacted them and they said expect a five percent increase. So that's what I did. And that's what I put into the budget. Then I'll bring you down to two lines, software yearly charge and the professional memberships. Professional memberships and the software yearly charges, we decided to print out and put them into our budget. Let us pull the model formula grant in line with what other departments do in their budgets.
Can you clarify, could I ask? I know.
Yeah.
In the past, this came from a grant, you explained that to me before, and that every effort would be made to keep that grant in place and to have those funds paid out of that as a possibility, or is that now not your thinking?
It's a possibility, but we'd like to take advantage of those funds for the seniors in the town, rather than paying for the software, which records how many people are using the senior center and the professional memberships. And if you look at everybody else's budget, I shouldn't say everybody else's, but when I look at like the police, I look at the assessors, I look at the fire chief, um, any place where they have.
I actually, look, they do have, there are enough places where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I realized after you and I had spoken a few weeks ago, that I should look into it. They were, they were.
I'm glad you did, yeah, yeah. And I pulled my old sheets out too and I looked through, I said, oh, yeah, this one, that this, and so, yeah, so that's why we wanted to pull it out. And the thinking there was you want to be able to spend the money on the seniors in town.
Um, it's about a better budgeting practice to show it.
It is.
Initially, again, if you compare it with something else, that's even better, but to not show it at all kind of keeps it hidden, so nobody knows about it.
That's right.
And that's what you were doing, or what was being done, so.
Right.
I, I'm fine with it being there. I mean, I wish it wasn't, but.
Yeah.
I understand the rational.
And the same rationale applies to the software yearly charge, same thing. And when I look through the other town, uh, uh, I'll just see that there is a line item for software. And so we, yeah, I have the software assessors, um, I think the police department does as well. And so we were trying to do the same so we could once again save that money for the, for use for the, uh, for the seniors. Um, for office supplies, I did the same things you did, the assessors, actually, but we're, um, um, what I did a budget for was I was just looking at the fact that now we have a printer and all I went out was priced the a toner. And our, um, printer has two cartridges that you have to use, which makes it a bit more expensive to use. And I think I said, well, maybe when we use our printers, we'll have like three changes of cartridges, um, especially if we print the newsletter, and so I just budgeted for the three and I threw in, I think, twenty-five bucks for paper. And that's where that figure came from. Um, the next one is, uh, is outreach. And I spoke to Jan Hanrahan and she would like to up the amount of outreach she is showing for the people in the town. So she asked, it would be put in about a four hundred dollar increase because there were a lot of supplies in the senior center, she said she's used a lot of supplies and would anticipate having, uh, to replace those supplies.
So Claire, can I, if I could ask, you've got a four hundred dollar increase in the budget now, so is that an additional four hundred or is that the increase?
That is the increase.
Okay, so you were asking for four hundred more?
I am indeed. Uh-huh, so when I'm looking at the budget request, uh, fiscal year twenty-five budget request, we went from twenty-three hundred, we went to twenty-seven hundred, and I'm asking for a four hundred dollar, uh, increase by the, raising it to the twenty-seven hundred.
Okay, I thought you were trying to say go to thirty-one.
No, no, no.
Okay, 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 I've already got that in all, that's in all the sheets we've had, yeah.
Yeah, uh-huh, so I just was filling out your sheet and doing the calculation and we have this. Now, when I do this, I want you to know at the same time, I'm also watching what we're spending in our budgets. So, you know, it's a little, um, it's easier for the operating budget, it's very difficult, right? For the Formula One grant, uh, for spending out of revolving account, what we're spending on the donations, because those will come through on the trial balance, it doesn't come through an operating budget. Uh, and I'm flying a little bit blind now on trial balance, so. Uh, and then the other one, which, um, I increased as well, was the coordinator's wages. And the reason why I increased that is because I asked the coordinator how many hours she was working and what the rate was, and she was working ten hours a week and asking, she was actually working more, she was working twelve and thirteen, but was asking to be paid for ten hours a week. And she was getting paid at eighteen dollars an hour and other towns were paying twenty dollars an hour. So what I was trying to do is pay our coordinator on an equity basis with other towns. And I wanted to make sure that she's getting paid for the hours that she works. You know, I feel like the town doesn't want to ask people to work hours without being paid. And so that's the reason why I do it, so.
We agree wholeheartedly on the hours, if someone's working, that they should be paid for those hours. Um, I think the board of selectmen is slow looking salary just because, you know, that's a twenty-some percent increase, which is significant. Um, actually, I think about the largest percentage-wise increase that we had, uh, for one individual. So I, I, I got the same answer that I would throw to Dawn and Erin and Lucy that until we have all of this done and you, you went through it, so you know, then you've got to look at the salary and say, what can we actually afford? I think I certainly recognize the value of Melanie, she's, she's really good, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm not questioning that, that this is, there's a reasonable reason why, it's just can the town afford it this year? There's a couple other issues that are circulating, and Priscilla solved one of them, which is nice. Uh, library is an issue, there's some others things going on that we just got to make sure we address first.
I know, and that's why I would really like to make sure we pay equity and hours more.
Hours.
So we'll be very careful about this, is what I'm trying to do. The other thing too is, you know what's awful about small numbers? If you increase from one buck to two bucks, that's a hundred percent increase. So those percentages can be so misleading when you're dealing with small numbers. So when I looked at this, I was like, oh my God, they're never going to approve this. They're going to look at those percentages and they're going to up chalk, you know? So that's why I was trying to be very careful because with small numbers, the percentages can sometimes be misleading.
The other thing I think you know, just to remind everyone, um, you know, I'm looking, I, I, I've continued your practice of tracking the salaries every year. So, you know, if you look at the council on aging up until gosh, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
It was a few hundred dollars. Probably that there was a period when it was thirteen hundred, twelve hundred, then it went down to three hundred dollars total.
Yeah.
And then now it's ten thousand, three hundred, so again, there's been a lot spent there, there's new money over the last two years already. So it's, it's just, again, just one of those things you know, which you say, gee, we really changed the structure of the council on aging itself.
Let me, let me give you some background and you'll, you'll understand where those numbers are coming from. First of all, it was the director, well, not director, it was, you couldn't use that term. Uh, but we were giving Lucy a stipend of three hundred dollars a year for, I think for her. And then one year, Paul said, that's unfair. So we should at least give her twelve hundred dollars, which we did. And then there was a salary increase, I can't remember what the standard made it, one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. And then Lucy said, I know.
That was twenty-one.
Yeah, and then Lucy said, I don't need the money. And she reduced it in the budget, she took our budget that we had proposed and she reduced it to three hundred. And she wouldn't let us on the finance committee give her more money. Now that position is now Barbara, she works for free. So Barbara's doing a tremendous amount of work in the senior center and she's always on the go and she's always down at the senior center. She gets nothing, not even a stipend. What we did is that money got shifted to an activities director to try to bring in more activities to get more people to use the senior center. And so there's been a shift in terms of, uh, how we, uh, use personnel in the senior center. And so you can't see that in the figures, but that's really what happened.
Yeah, I, I just bring it up, just, just so everyone's aware of it, Claire's, you know, the revenue is going up by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right now. And it's early, there'll probably be some tweaking of that and Priscilla may impact that slightly if she looks at that overlay. But we've got about three hundred thousand dollar increases right now sitting in front of us between the school and the town.
Yeah.
And we're normally, as you know, at a sixty, forty ratio with the school, I mean, that's about what it averages out.
It's always across.
It seems to be right, or I mean, fifty-eight, fifty-seven, sixty-one, whatever year you look at.
Commonwealth.
And if you look at it that way, the town is, is looking at about a six, over a six percent increase, right? Again, it's, it's very, it's not firm because nothing's in there for a lot of salaries and things, I guess, this is what everyone asks for.
I understand.
Some things are going to have to be reduced at some level, just, just, when we get to it, just so you know.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing too, Alan, is that when we go into the budget season, we go with an estimated revenue. And the ladies here in this town hall trained me really good when I was on the finance committee. One of them's sitting right over there, okay? And I know what we do with estimates to try to protect our free cash. So you really never know, which we, we, we work with those local revenue figures, we go real conservative on the local revenue figures. And, um, so we're, we are lowballing our, our revenue convenience. So don't get panic struck yet. You don't have to balance the budget, Ashley, you don't have to technically, technically.
Technically.
But you're in June, but you have to by the time you set the tax rate.
Right.
Okay, when you know what your revenue is looking at. And last year, I'll bet you were looking at a distressing situation in June. Then we put a hundred thousand dollars in stabilization, we put, uh, fifty thousand dollars in the capital stabilization, seventy-five. And then we put, um, you know, this is off the top of my head, then we put more money into the police car stabilization.
Two hundred thousand in total of.
Yeah, so don't panic yet. And I used to panic every year.
Sure.
Don't, don't panic yet, so just.
Paul Ross Schut from Gaffney Road, uh, just very quickly, the coordinator's position was a brand-new position, okay, with no history on how many hours it actually take for the performance of the duties that were associated with that position. And the lady that's doing it, okay, I think initially, I think we were a couple of years back, we were estimating somewhere between eight and ten hours. But again, with no history, you really can't nail it.
Couldn't work more than two hours a week, so we went with the two, oh, I'm sorry, two days a week, so we went with the two days at four hours a day. That's how we devised.
That's what came up for the eight hours and then.
And I.
She was consistently working a little bit more and I think you were helping her give her a couple more hours when you could.
We told her she had up to ten dollars an hour if, oh.
Ten hours.
Ten hours, ten hours, if she needed it, because she was. If she needed it because she was saying that she was working a little more at night or whatever. And I said, well, how many hours are you putting in? She told me, I said, you get paid for the hours that you work. And so she started then charging the ten dollars, which was fine. We didn't come, we didn't complain.
The.
I went by.
The responsibilities that she's taken on, I mean, to give her. A couple more hours, two, two more hours a week, which would be twelve hours. Okay, and her performance has been exemplary. I mean, she's been teaching. Uh, IT stuff to the seniors on how to use iPhones and she's been doing. You know, dietitian seminars at times. I mean, she, she has really, really fulfilled. An open hole down there for the seniors. So. I think overall, you know, we're not asking for a whole lot, but if, you know, she could get like a two dollar an hour raise. And, and be given the extra two hours a week to work, that'd be twelve, you know, basically a twelve hour week. You know, probably bring her up to about. A little over twenty dollars an hour. I, I, in my own mind, I was looking at it, okay, I think it would be. An additional like a thousand fifty dollars a year. That's just a.
I think that's.
My own figure, okay, but. We, we're really not asking for a whole lot. We're not looking for a ten dollar an hour raise or anything like that.
But what you're telling me then is she has more time than she had when she first applied for the job.
She's working more time and she, you know. The senior center now is, is, is open, not only just for meals, but four days a week. And, and she's putting in a lot of time and a lot of effort. So I just wanted to bring that up. And what I would suggest. Is, is leaving the line item for her salary. At ten thousand three hundred, which is low funded. And we put in a request for an article to give a, an additional two hours. In the two dollar an hour pay rates. That way, if it can't happen, it's on an article, it's not going to affect the budgets, okay? And. If, if it can pass and, and everybody is good with it. It's, it's a very, very proper way to do it.
Paul, if I could ask you a question?
Yes.
Once, once you have that approved on an article, it would be in the budget each following year. So you're putting it in the budget, you're just disguising it for the first year.
It's not in the budget unless it passed or.
Right, because it does pass.
Dislectment are totally tied up. And you don't want to put the article, they're in control whether that article can go on or not.
Yeah, no, I just know that when you were the chairman, you used to talk to us about always be concerned of articles that become permitted in the budget. Because they're, they are part of the budget once they're voted in the first.
Yeah, absolutely.
Goes away. You just, you just want to make sure that I'm clear that that's how that would work.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's all I have on that. And I also want to state that I am not on the council, okay? I'm just speaking as, as a resident.
Thanks, Paul.
Um, Barbara, I just want to attest to the fact that Melanie puts in so many hours. It's very difficult when she's here to do, get any planning, scheduling, anything. It's constantly interacting with people who are here. And that is a major part of her job. So most of the hours for scheduling, for activity planning. Just the research for activities and all of that is done at home and it's well more than two more hours a week. It's a lot of hours a week.
That includes a bunch of presentation. Can I ask how you were using the revolving account? Uh, we're using the revolving account for various activities. The last one we were using up uh. Supplies from the past Friday night, we had probably fifty, or Friday afternoon, we had probably fifteen people here. We chose to do potluck and we chose to use uh, old paper products and call it mismatch just to not spend a whole lot of money. Other than that, it's been used to defer costs of lunches. It's like the Thanksgiving dinner, things like that.
Gee, I wish I had that budget sheet up.
I know.
Because I've been tracking how, what we're spending out of accounts and where the money is going. And I'm sorry, Lucy, I'd have to look up that sheet.
Okay, because I will tell you one thing that I was kind of disturbed about that said. You, you might run out of grant money down here. It says or require more grant money. Well, you're not, you know, you can't get more grant money. So somehow you've got to work that you can work within the grant money and within the budget. By adjusting all your other costs. I understand this here that you're still doing exercise classes twice a week. One on Monday, one on Friday, which is fine. That was planned for in the grant. And the grant this year, which was almost eight thousand dollars, would have accommodated it. But then I understand halfway through the year that the um. Person who teaches the fitness and the Zumba has raised her price.
Yes.
From twenty-five to thirty-five, which then does affect the grant.
Yes.
To a negative, but probably by the end of the year, it might possibly bring it down to a negative.
And we did that, we allowed her to do that to be um. The same as what she gets paid in the other towns that she serves, that she teaches in. And we did plan, she brings in money to the revolving account.
That's what I.
And to use.
So the money that comes in from the people that are in her classes then goes into the revolving account. That money should be able to balance out the cost.
Eventually, we chose to use the grant money first because it was available to us. But going forward, once the grant. Is, we, we felt that we should use the grant rather than lose it or not.
Exactly, no, I understand that.
Efficient, you know, and then we have the revolving account to use going forward.
Right, so all the money that she collects for her classes.
Right.
You deposit into the revolving account.
Yes.
And you are charging how much?
Two dollars.
Two dollars a class.
Her price went up. We did not, we didn't.
I understand you did not raise the price of those. And the two dollars a class, that is a very good deal. Possibly you could increase the cost to three.
We have talked about that.
Or possibly four, and that would balance it out that you wouldn't need an out, um, anything. From the grant at all, you would be able to sustain it and it could become a self-sustaining program.
We, that's all. Part of our problem was that we didn't know exactly what funds we were actually allowed to be for. Were able to use at the time because we didn't know what was in each account for sure. So it's taken us eight months to figure out exactly where we stand with each account. And now going forward with Claire's help, we have everything straightened out. So we can approach. Perhaps charging more money per person, taking reports or whatever. We didn't want to change anything, not knowing. Exactly where we stood.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we, I reconstructed the accounts. And that's why Laurie sends me the trial balance every month. Because I'm tracking the trial balance. I know exactly where we are on all accounts.
Right.
Operating, formula grounds, revolving account, donations.
And expenses for example, um. Uh, food for the health there. I'm not sure whether that came actually out of outreach or whether that came out of revolving.
That came out of outreach at this point.
Yeah. But there are things like that where we've had to make decisions because we didn't know exactly.
Right.
Where we were.
But if it can become self-sustaining in your exercise classes. You should then be able to put the twelve hundred dollars for software back into. The grant. I don't know how much you're going to get though. I think that's going to be a big problem for you all next year is.
And that's one of the considerations.
I honestly wouldn't even take a guess what they're going to do in the state.
And that was one of the considerations for pulling it out of the grant and having it as a lineup.
Yeah, right. So that, um.
It's very, it's, grants are tough because it's soft money.
And you did get your second half of the grant this year, did you not? Because you want, they almost lost it.
Yes, but we can't spend it. That's until it's posted. Has to be posted.
No, definitely.
It's not posted, yeah. And I've told you these things, I'm spending money that isn't posted. I've got to see it in that account. I gotta see it in there. Otherwise, we'll run to you.
You know, the grant has always been paid for as deficit spending. From July first until the end of the year.
Laurie told me you can deficit spend. Because we were waiting for the first part of the grant to come in. So we had about three thousand dollars left.
Right.
And Laura said, I will let you spend up to the amount of the first part of the grant coming in because I know we're going to get it. She said, you know.
Wasn't sure about the second.
And I put the brakes on.
This is the first year they've ever divided up the grant to come in in sections like that. I, it made me very nervous because the grant was planned out for the eight thousand dollars and not for half of it.
Yeah, I was a little nervous too because I kept saying, when's it coming in? When's it coming in? When's it coming in? Is it coming in?
And I will tell you, and you can tell all your seniors and any senior that happens to be listening, but every time. Austin wants to take your money, get on the phone and call your representatives and call your senators. That is the reason. You got the second half of that money back was because the seniors got on the phone and got after them.
And you know, Lucy, that is an excellent point as to why we didn't want to put our salary increase on soft money. That, that's the advice they always give you. Never put recurring expenses.
Right. But if you can make that uh.
It's, it's definitely.
It would be.
Yeah.
Better for you. It would be better for the budget as well. I think it would work out very nicely and then we could maybe. Change something else in the budget so it would work smoothly. And then I have one thing I would like to say that um, the three hundred dollars that was always put aside. I never collected it. I never, that was never given to me.
What, three hundred dollars? Oh, yes, oh, yes.
You're right.
Never.
No, you never did.
I never turned in.
Anything for working downstairs in the senior center. Yes, one year they gave me twelve hundred dollars. I did not want it. And then they put it in for the next year and I told them, no, I would not take it. And I never took the twelve hundred dollars after that.
Yeah, we know.
Please.
We know that.
Well, that's not what your statement said before.
Oh, no, I said that you didn't take the money. We gave you three hundred. Then we, we felt bad. We upped it to finance the twelve hundred. And then you said I don't want.
I did not.
Yeah, and you, you reduced the budget to three hundred, yep. Yeah.
If I may, going forward, I think there will be an issue because. As we grow and, or if we coordinate even with another senior center. There will be. Uh, need for funds to pay some professional people like a director or like whatever. And that's going forward. It's, it's there. There's a lot of work down there that right now. Is all free, except for our activities coordinator. It is a lot that's been going on. Going forward, I don't know of anyone assuming this position without remuneration. Especially if you're looking to have someone with credentials backing up what they're going to do.
That would be in the case of hiring a director.
Like even a shared.
Right.
Even.
Or a shared one and that will cost the town a lot more money.
Right.
So you would want to look really ahead at that, but that would be up to the. Council to decide and then eventually it would come back to the board of selectmen to decide.
Yes, we understand. We're with you, we're on board with you on that.
Yes, yeah, to be very sure of that.
Budget, so.
Now that concludes.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
But um. Hopefully your budget doesn't get decreased by the grant being decreased next year because it does make a difference in your line item.
Yeah, it went up this year by two bucks a person, you know? Oh, I mean, two bucks is two bucks.
Right.
You know?
But they, they are, they're planting, planning on you only having about five hundred sixty seniors in town.
We have a lot less. Are they? Because right now it's five seventy-one and they're. Yeah.
Uh, but actually, we have a lot more seniors than that, that they are not counting. They're only counting what we had in twenty twenty.
Yeah, you know, I can't get that directly south of twenty twenty census, I'm twenty twenty seven and it's lower. And I'm saying, I wonder where they got their numbers from, but I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
So that, you know, the grant next year, I have no idea what it would be if they're going to keep it up at. That age, they can change the age because I've heard that being spread out that, you know. Sixteen really isn't a senior anymore. It would be sixty-five or seventy. So that's going to affect your budget quite a bit too. But I think Barbara, I heard you say you sent out a hundred fifty-one cards at Christmas time?
Yes.
And that was probably, that was for over seventy-five and that was the most we have sent out. Next year might be a little more.
Right.
So the budget for you is going to get very tight.
I'm watching every nickel.
But it has been tight for years, but we've always managed. The town has always been very supportive of the senior center. I'm sure that the town will be.
Supportive again, I hope, this year.
I'm sure they will be. Okay, thank you for the revolving account information and the fitness and Zumba being able to be self-sustaining. That'd be very interesting.
And next up, annual town meeting, open the warrant. It's up to date. I'm not opening it today.
We did. It's on my calendar, things to do tonight. Right there.
It's open today. I don't see a reason to keep this open for a month, for two months. I don't know what they need, they know what they want.
Oh, I agree.
You know.
They've done all their budgets.
They've done their budgets. So I would say. What was it on?
Sounds like more money's coming in, so.
Yeah, well, that gives it three weeks. And that'll give us time to get out to KMP with the.
Yes, that's the biggest issue.
Next thing would be setting the date for the annual. I mean, Dennis, do you have any days that a lot could be, or are you going to be hunting somewhere?
Sometimes. Bring it somewhere, I'm pretty flexible.
Do we want to push this to May twentieth?
Of the annual?
The annual?
That's the election day?
Elections, they Chinese, yeah. I just think that's going to be awfully tight.
Yeah.
I, I think it's time we start getting tighter. We wait, and wait, and wait.
But normally we're waiting for town council.
That's what I'm saying.
And we're not going to be able to push them much faster.
Well, I think if they know.
Unfortunately.
Dates coming up, they move a little quicker because we're going to get it to them quicker. We can get it to them, I'm told.
Because the warrant closes on April twelfth. That gives us two weeks. To put together all the articles. And then send them out to town council. And then to write up everything and get it back from them. Advertise it for one week ahead of time. I think you're running very close, maybe a tad too close.
You're going to have budgets from the state. Like that.
We've got a governor's budget. We're just going to go on that. It's not going to change much with the Senate and the House.
Exactly.
It's not going down, so. If you didn't give us.
Yeah.
You know, um. There's no reason to wait for that. If it comes in higher, we have more money. But it's free cash. That's what we do. We always wait for the.
Yeah, no, I know that's why it's pushed out to.
Yeah, puts us behind the eight ball every. Puts us behind the eight ball every year. So this way, just go with what we got.
Uh, Claire Henshaw from, oh, there's never much of a change from the governor's budget, not for Ocam.
Not for us.
Not for Ocam. Yeah, we always want the governor's budget because it was conservative.
Yeah.
He couldn't, you know, couldn't go wrong.
We don't get much.
No. How close to Memorial Day is?
A week before. We can try it.
It says that it's our target date anyway.
Yeah, that's just going to stay, I mean, just a few weeks after that.
Right.
Really needed it.
Right.
Yeah, motion I like.
Yeah.
I've moved that we scheduled the annual town meeting for June third at seven PM. At the fire station.
April second.
Local election, early voting.
Yeah, so, um, early voting is an opt-in option. Um, and, uh, we can't take any action until the registrars, um, take action. Um, and two out of the three would have to recommend, um, doing that. Um, and, um, should that happen, um, we actually have, uh. About another, um, month before we would have to vote, um, to allow, uh, early voting. Um, as an option.
That's physical voting.
Yeah, so like if, if the clerk were open Monday night, it could be scheduled just for the, the night that she's working. Um, as an option. Um, and then the other one, uh, is an opt-out only. Um, and there does have to be a, a hearing forty-five days in advance, um, to do that. If I, if my math is correct, um, having to do two newspapers seven days apart. Uh, we're fifty-five days, uh, to the election, so we're already too late, uh, to opt out. And so, um, uh, mail-in voting, uh, is. Is, uh, the rule, um, for now, um, and anybody who submitted. One of the state's mail-in forms has to receive, um, the mailing ballot, the municipal mailing ballot. Um, and Ocam does not have to mail to every resident another form to request the mail-in ballot. Um, but if the town, if the clerk receives a, uh, signed document requesting. A mailed-in ballot for the municipal election that she can cross-reference, um, we would have to then. Send it to her, but we don't have to do a mail out to everybody. Again, it can just be communicated through whatever means that we choose to communicate it. And that does come from, um, an attorney at the secretary of, uh. State's office, which I did for, to the, um, clerk, and she, um, said she was actually on the phone. Um, attempting to get that information, um, and it corresponded with her communication.
Mail-in voting, we don't have to do anything.
At this point, we can't.
We can't.
For this upcoming.
We would have to vote, can you, go on.
Right.
Not to do.
Correct. It, it's an automatic opt-in, um, to not do mail-in as an opt-out with forty-five days of hearing. Yeah, she had at least two hundred requests.
Yes, she did.
Um, and I think she said about a hundred and fifty maybe, actual. Um, so, but she'll have to go through all of those state ones. And find out who selected the all elections. Not everybody selected the all election. So those are the only ones she's required to send to, uh, there'll be, need to be some communication that there is an option. Um, but we don't have to mail to all eight hundred households. So that we're not doing anything. It's all in the clerk's hands.
I, I don't see the point of early voting for a local election in a town this size. It's more work, probably an additional expense.
It is.
Historically, it's been a hundred to two hundred votes. In the local election. I think voting day is good enough. I just don't see the point of putting more work on the people that do it. You know, the people that work the elections don't mind doing it, but. They don't want to be doing it all the time. Just my personal opinion.
But for this year, we really don't have a choice.
No, no, for early voting, we don't, we don't have a say in it unless the registrars present a plan. Um, to do that. We, we can't vote to go that way, uh, without the registrars recommending it for early voting. But with the mail-in voting option, I feel like that's an option for people who work out of Ocam from ten o'clock. To eight o'clock. Some people can't get back to Ocam in time, and the only legal way you can. Fill out an absentee ballot is if you're hospitalized, you know, if you're going to follow the letter of the law for the absentee. It ma, it is different, more difficult as a, if you allow the mail-in voting.
That's true.
You can do it for any reason, and at this point, we're not able to opt out for the, for the may. So. I, I, I see no reason either why the registrars would recommend, um, the early voting option. But that's their, their decision. Yes. Yeah, I did. I mean, I emailed the clerk both of the communications that are in writing, um, from the secretary of state's office.
Not requesting it, when, uh, you know, they say about, so.
I gotta give my two cents in.
Uh, next up, schedule an annual town reading education session that you was.
So, um, I, I just reflected on a few years back when finances were getting really tight. Unlike, not unlike today, um, and I felt like that, uh, education session was eye-opening for people to. Understand the predicament we're in, um, and if there is time and if the finance committee. Um, and or the selectmen or any volunteers were interested to do a pre. Um, preview on the state of, um, finance, uh, before the annual town meeting, give people that option, which could be. Uh, remote, um, as an option, assuming.
I would want to talk to the other two members, um, for confirmation, but I, in the past, thought it would be a good idea. So I mean, I, I think it's a. It, it's not a hard thing to do, you, you know, assuming it's far enough out from now. That you can do it in the timeline we have, we have to mail out, uh, two weeks before the actual town meeting, so you'd have to do it probably that week. So if you're talking. June third, I think you said for the town meeting, June second, June third, June third. So you're talking, uh, you know, something closer to three weeks before that. So you're looking in, uh, first half of May. So we'd have to move quickly to finalize the budget at this point in time.
When would you be able to mail out the finance report?
Is the requirement has to be there one week before? I think they have to have it for a week. So we, we, if you remember last year, we, we copied it here to save some money. And then mailed it locally, so we, I think we mailed it in, maybe it was about nine days before the town meeting we mailed it last year.
They should have that in hand before we do a budget meeting with the town in general.
Right, so you have. That's what I'm saying, so you have to speed everything up so we get everything done, uh, so we can have, because you don't want to have the meeting. And then mail out something two weeks later that's changed. You know, we've got to pretty much have it locked down by then, so that's. I'd be willing to do it. I'm sure Cory and Steve, I, I think, would certainly be able to help out, what it's like, and hopefully would participate in something like that. Especially if you have the other two items on there also.
Steve is on, by the way.
He is, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Um, so that was that one.
Erin, if I could, I, and I'm thinking probably a very simple PowerPoint or something like that, if we could just project is, is how you probably end up doing it.
Yep. I mean, it doesn't, it could be here. I mean, I don't know, if, do you think we'd have more than thirty people up to something like that?
I, I really couldn't fathom a yes. I, I don't know. I think a lot of people, if you have it online, might be interested.
That's what I, I think, and that way it's recorded too, so even if they don't want to come that night, at least they have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Um, so the next item?
Yep.
Um, and then if we consolidated the other two items, uh, which is the, um, town hall. Um, options that were discussed at the last annual town meeting, uh. Actually, uh, is that going to be on the election? That's an election vote, right? Oh, sorry. No, town hall cuts, yeah, considerations are the annual town meeting for, for a sense of the.
Like a non-binding question.
So, uh, assuming that the study committee has presented to the board of selectmen their final recommendations. For them to have a chance at that education session to also talk about the three options. However, however many options it was determined, okay, um. So, um, but the third one would not be on there because it would be after the, uh. Uh, municipal election, but I, I wonder if. There should be, uh, some discussion at the end of a selectman's meeting or something to explain. Again, the, the rationale, um, for the municipal election on the town clerk. Because I don't know that, I know I was not able to be at that last annual town meeting, um. So there may still be questions out there about the, the rationale.
Could do a mail-in on that.
So we would wait for the finance committee to, um. Uh, make a recommendation on their interest in the budget and the, uh, the budget. Um, and then hopefully the town hall study committee will be able to be present on that same night.
Yeah.
And then maybe a mailing for the town clerk.
If anyone taking out papers for time. We're actually not going to have a choice if nobody runs.
It would be at least an interim.
Would the board be, if no one ran, then the point?
At that point, then we would have to appoint somebody quickly. Because they would have to get ready for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think like the whole, how is this all going to work? Because if, let's say they were somebody on the ballot. But yet the vote ends up going the other way, um, like, I think it'd be important for people to understand.
Council, I had it all, by the stature of what happens.
Yeah. Yep.
People vote for, um, elected, whoever gets elected is in.
Right, right.
If it goes the other way, and someone gets elected, they're only elected until we make the appointment.
And it could be, they might express interest.
That could be one of the same person.
But it can be someone else.
It might be somebody.
Yeah. And we have posted it just in case.
Just.
Uh, because at this point, we need to be sourcing potential candidates.
Right.
Yes.
Otherwise, we'll be six months without, if it gets voted in without somebody.
Right.
All right. Next up is the website.
Okay, so bear with me on this one. This is, and, uh, quite the process, which has been going up until six oh eight this evening. Um, so we received a grant for twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars or something like that. Um, to do, uh, website enhancements, uh, last October or something like, or it's a while ago, it was applied for a while ago. Um, and, um. So I reached out to, um, Civic Plus, our existing, um. Provider. Um, they provided an estimate as part of the grant application. Uh, in anticipation of that grant application. Um, which had an annual recurring fee of something like seven, eight thousand dollars.
Um, yes, big, the full cost.
Yeah, um, as an annual, um. And then, um, I asked, um, them what, for a copy of the contract. Uh, because I said, what would be the, um, how much notice is required to potentially exit? Because up until that point, they weren't really playing, they weren't offering anything, like, here you go. I'm like, okay, well then maybe we'll look elsewhere. And so when our account rep found out about it. Immediately said, would you be willing to give us a chance? Uh, and I've met with her like two or three times now. Um, and, um, so Civic Plus, um, you do have a very late-breaking. Um, this one pager. Um, is their best and final offer. Um. And I can tell you that the town of Rutland and the town of Auburn currently use. Um, Civic Plus, uh, this standard version. Um. Interestingly, what I didn't know is that the version that we have is not owned by Civic Plus. It was a platform that Civic Plus was, um, paying for. Um, and, um. They, um, have no ability really to, um. Make it what we want it to be. It's just all in a box. You put your picture in that box. You put the text over here, you put the text over there, you can't change it. So their proposal to upgrade us. Was basically in that same restrictive. Space, but like five thousand dollars more a year. Um, and so with that, I ended up, we met with Munibit and revised. So, um, Unibit is a one-page proposal. Um, I, I would say this is similar to what we have now. Um, very basic. Um, but that's. Very boxy, very limited in what you can do.
And they were the ones that weren't ready yet to.
For the agendas.
Were stamping the agenda and the times that they're being submitted.
Yes, so we'd be going backwards.
And they wouldn't be able to do it for at least till the end of the year.
So I, I, I would not recommend Unibit at all. So then there was revised, revised, um, up until um. I had these three meetings with Civic Plus in the last week. Was my, my definite top recommendation. It definitely is um, the most. User-friendly and allowing customization. It does allow, and, and it allows pictures, like, so let me show you, uh, Fall River. And then I'll come back to Rutland. So this is, this is revised. Their website. Now, does it look a little bit different than ours? Just a little. Um, so it, it allows you to customize all of these icons. Has the calendar right there. It allows in- uh, integrated YouTube. Though you could have, let's say, the last three meetings of, of a public meeting right here, where you could click YouTube and watch the meeting right there. Uh, it does have the um, agendas, timestamp, date stamped, the minutes. Um, it actually has a column where um, right now, we have to go to either agenda. Or minutes. It actually will have board of selectmen meetings. Eighteenth, agenda, minutes, YouTube, all in the same. So you're not going to three different.
You're not going back and forth, back and forth. That would become a chaser for.
But this is, oh, it has job openings. You can apply for the position. Right internally. You've got all the, the postings here. We can't do this with um, our current option. And Rub- um, Civic Plus does not have this option. It's an added um, cost. So. Uh, they create all of the customizable. Editable, so you can submit it all right here. Um, it even has like routing, so it could go to the main person that receives it. And then that person can internally within the system route it to, let's say, the department head or the board. To uh, get the next thing. So um, Fall River is um, is one of them. And if we look at their proposal. That was one I could give you last. You have their. And again, we have twenty five thousand eight hundred dollars for first year upfront, all of the upfront costs. Their um, estimate is twenty four thousand six hundred and twenty, year one. And then there's with forty four something. A year, sorry, forty four hundred a year after that. This is a. This updated. Their revised proposal costs. So it's a twenty five thousand five hundred fifty annual, first year one. And then forty five hundred dollars a year for year two through five. And this comes with. All of the, the options that um, we'd be looking at. There are additional ones, but again, I don't think we should look at them. Um, certainly not in the situation that we're in today. And there's no. There's no up charge yet, um, until after year five. Where they, they could negotiate a new rate. I believe Steve has the question.
So, uh, hey guys, uh, Steve Dallinger, Robinson Road, so. Real quick. What about security and vulnerabilities? So in the cost. Let's say there's a zero day that comes out, which affects all these websites. Are they monitoring us for severity, security problems such as? Somebody can do some type of ingestion into the website, right? Like, do they have? For the amount we're paying them, the ability to have them remediate any type of. Issues that come up that are pretty severe to protect us from.
So, uh, page eighteen, uh, security. My data centers are located on secure premises equipped with card reader access, security cameras guard twenty four seven. Our web and network administrators monitor network activity twenty four hours a day to ensure system integrity and protection against threats such as denial of service attacks. That could corrupt, corrupt your website or block user access. Maintaining the secure configuration of our web servers is managed through appropriate patches, upgrades, security testing, vulnerability scan, monitoring of logs. Backups of data and OS operations.
That's pretty awesome. If you're saying that, that, that's really good.
Um, revise in Civic Plus are the top two, uh, national.
The tech, the language you just read to me is exactly what you want here. In a security contract, just like, so, that's awesome.
So that, uh, revised also has um. Uh, employee login, so um, instead of SharePoint, um, for um. Like personnel policies, copies of W four forms, it could all be in, on our website. Uh, they don't have to have another login. They don't have to have a town email. Um, they can have access to a secure um, page as part of that.
And if I can just add that our exact amount for the grant is twenty five thousand five eighty seven, so.
Okay, right on there. So what they did is they um. Upfronted, uploaded um, into the gr- the grant year. Um, some of what might have been in the higher annual recurring costs, so they front loaded. And that's what um, the, the other company, uh, Civic Plus ended up doing. So, um, Civic Plus, unless anybody has any questions about revised. Um, Civic Plus is in the town of. Rutland and Auburn.
Do they have the new version of it?
They have the exact version that we would be potentially going.
Looking at, okay.
So Rutland and Auburn um, have um, this, what they call the standard version. It's closer to what we have today. Um, but it's much, much better than what we have today. Um, so there's no option for like video or anything like that, that Fall River was doing. But you do have agendas and minutes. Um, and you can see, um, you've got the agenda here on the left, you've got the minutes. Uh, and they have an option um, where you can have um, the YouTube as well. Can be on, in, in this, they could be a column for, if there was a video of that meeting. And they, uh, much like um. Uh, the Civic Plus that we have today, they do all the front end. Uh, posting of the date and time of the agenda being posted. So. We look at their. So they are proposing twenty thousand dollar, four hundred and twenty nine, year one. Uh, and then thirty eight thirteen, uh, recurring year two, year three, in year four. And then they have an automatic five percent increase every year. And so our original contract in twenty twenty um, was for, I think, two thousand dollars. But they have charged every year five percent more. And so, uh, they were only gonna do a one year for this. And I said, well, another company we're looking at is locking in the rate. Um, and so that's when they came back with this. So. They um, may look at Auburn. They're both, uh, this is the basic plan of both of theirs. Um, they have a basic, a midum, mid- middle, and then a super. It's just a different way they've designed their page. Oh, they, um, I think they have a GIS software that they did as well. It's an add-on. So these are basically the, the two plans. And I really, I think because. I only got Civic pluses today. I think it would be worthwhile doing a side-by-side comparison of um. What is each of the, the two offer, uh, because you're looking at a thirty eight thirteen versus a forty five hundred. I've had over a week with, with the revised plan. My gut says revised is a much better. Option, um, but um, I think it would be good to kind of see.
How many towns use revised?
Uh, that I know of in Massachusetts, two. I only know of two in Massachusetts. And I, and they do provide, yeah, so they're, these are all their other own. These are all other examples. I forget, North Hampton might be the other one um, that I found in Massachusetts. So now that you have basically, I think, two options, I would narrow it down to the two, drop the Unibit.
Right.
And, and um.
He didn't have that much to offer us.
No, it was, but a hundred eight dollars a month.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I know.
That was, that was what they had in their favor.
They did.
Hundred thirty six dollars a month. Oh, Pittsfield is revised.
We can't be winning.
So here's Pittsfield.
That looks nice.
And their, so their photos look like they've changed.
Yeah, like a slide. If you look at ours currently, libraries is the nicest one. They have a slideshow. I think so, it's colorful.
And each would department would have its own page.
Correct, yep.
That they can.
They can.
As they would like it.
So the, um. Yes, on, on this one they do, on the other one, on Civic Plus, they don't have the option. It's all um.
Is it gonna still look like?
Okay, well, look at the Braintree though. Braintree's.
Who do they have?
Civic Plus, I believe, if you look it up. Um, but the Braintree's have, I believe they have a person who. Or.
Yeah, it hasn't been updated since twenty nineteen, I think.
Okay, I, I did not know that.
But they don't, I don't think they have the standard. The only, the closest ones around with the standard were Auburn.
So they have a step higher?
Yes, yes.
But it.
Yeah.
But if you look at them, they have the, you know, the little slide. Their website is pretty, it's nice and it's Civic Plus as well.
Isn't that pretty?
And then the other thing that maybe you would wanna do is um, do a demo. With the two of them. Yeah, if you guys want them to do a, a walkthrough. I know they'd both be willing, Alita and Sean would be willing to do that.
It's good to have the department heads. So that they can get an idea of what they're responsible for.
So the, the way this would work is.
Yeah.
No matter what. No, no matter what um, company we go with, they will work with the IT team. And they create, they don't, I think it's their own company.
Yeah.
It's a local.
Yep.
Everything is set up as part of the um, implementation. So, a, a couple representatives from the town would work with them. They transfer whether. We, we stay with Civic Plus or we went to Revised. Revised would be able to pull everything from our existing.
Okay.
Not that I think it should take much.
Well, I, that's what I say, if we're getting rid of it.
But they would build it to how we want it before it goes live. And they have, you know, twelve hours, I think, uh, budgeted for each. Um, to help, they, they would sit with the department um, and work with them um, on creating it. I don't know that we're gonna have every board willing to do that, so we might have to say, start with the basic.
Right.
Um, but we'll have the ability thereafter to customize it however we want it to. Um, unlike in the template that we have today, there's no customizing.
No, there isn't.
So they're really recommending everybody abandon their version, their old version. Um, because they just don't have the ability to do anything with it.
Susan has a question.
Susan Turnbull, Ulta, wherever I live, New Braintree. Can we look at a, a department like the police department or a library or something, so we can see what the individual.
So this, no, who is this? This is. It's, I mean, what, uh, revised or Civic Plus?
That's revised.
Okay.
No.
Yeah.
So if we look, uh.
Green Bar.
So you notice Assessor's was able to have its own picture here.
Look at that.
All the documents are on the left. They, they've subscribed to GIS. Um, that's a separate subscription. You would have to pay the GIS company. I don't know what it costs, but that was not anything I was asked for. Um, I don't know what it costs, but that was not anything I was asked for. Just, um, so this is, uh, basically just documents, um, on here. Or, uh, council on aging, or, oh, what do they call it, senior center?
It is council on aging.
Do they have it?
Second call, halfway down, there you go.
And, uh, this is drag and drop, which is kind of nice. Um, so I would definitely recommend looking at both, um, so Auburn and, um, and Rutland are Civic Plus examples at the standard, um, rate. Um, and then we found Pittsfield and Fall River, um, are in the revised. But there definitely are, um, they're at, they're add-ons, um, what's built in and what's an add-on, I, I would look at both of those for the two proposals, um. Yeah, so everything on page twenty-five, um, is what's included, um, in Revise, and then on the page twenty-six is potential add-ons, like, if we wanted to pay thirty-five dollars for a half an hour, the council on aging could hire Revise to change their if we didn't have anybody in charge to do it. And then, um, the same thing with, um, Civic Plus, um, they have what's part of their, uh, modules, and then all the things that are added on, so, um, right now, um, having an individual department page is not part of the Civic Plus, to be able to make your department different than all the rest. Civic Plus, um. It's the, it's just the version that people picked.
Yeah, I was looking to see if.
We just picked the cheapest version that was out there, a- and they didn't have updates, and now they're forcing everybody to go to this ten. Um, but they're not in control on their end of getting people on it, we even said, what if we paid you to get us the ten? And they said, we can't guarantee it, we can't even guarantee what the price will be, um, and you don't have, it's not customizable. I mean, it's not a drag and drop, it's still a template. Um, so, and if we stay with that version ten, which was seventy-eight hundred dollars, um, a year, whereas their homegrown that they're proposing is thirty, thirty-eight, I think. Um, so.
What Revise?
From what I've seen so far, and the pages I've looked at and studied, I would also agree.
Andrew Lincoln wrote, is it worthwhile to call the towns that use it? See if they're happy with it? What they like, what they don't like?
So it's Fall River, uh, and, uh, and I actually met a city councilman, uh, in Fall River at the MMA conference, I have his card.
Oh, sounds good. Like that, it's just meant for you to take a lead on this project.
So I can have that for the next meeting?
Yeah, that would be fun.
Well, I, I will say, very impressed with this Alita from Civic Plus, who worked for Tailoff, um, and apologized for our less than nice experience I think we had, um, with the initial proposal. Um, the gentleman did his best, but didn't really have the ability to make any decisions, it was obvious.
No.
Um, but it's because they're using another provider.
Right.
To do all of that, and I don't know why they didn't offer this option, um, in their grant proposal.
Right.
Unless they want, they thought we wanted to stay in the same platform.
Like they ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Next, regular meeting.
Next Monday.
Is that much on that one, is there? I don't know, they're all getting there.
That's the Aaron's own license.
Um, I think we discovered from the town accountant that we would not, the, the uses of what we voted at the municipal town meeting are extremely limited.
We're all set.
Okay.
So we had a home conference. Because of the party. Also, spectrum not giving us the equipment, this is how we're gonna.
This is our public access.
This is the public access.
Right, and I think she just thought he was capable, right, not going back, so it was just a clear.
Okay.
The communication.
Yeah, once she understood the whole thing, she said, oh, absolutely.
Wow, okay, good.
You can use it.
But, cause otherwise, it's like, what are you gonna do with that? I mean, uh, here we are with this, um, jerry-rigged extra camera, but we could potentially use that to have a, a hard-wired camera to continue to enhance the experience.
So this is for one additional individual.
Individual Zoom license.
So who, who's contacting Zoom?
So Stephen, if you and I could meet, like, do you have time tomorrow?
Yeah, I have time tomorrow, I'll give you the contact for our, our, our account manager.
Yep.
And we'll transfer the account, I figured out how to do it. Easy peasy lemon squeezy, I just, we both need to be on the phone on like, a WebEx or something.
Awesome, and so once I get that, you and I can work on setting up the next one? Or you can do it?
Whatever.
Yeah, so once, once we get it into the BOS email.
Yeah, just because I know I couldn't.
Yep.
Request, you know, that's a new license, cause it's not under.
Yep.
I also fit, Aaron, I fixed the, um, the Zoom room for the fire station that we have right now. So it is now permanent.
Yep.
So.
Well, I'll, I can go there and find out what that is.
We've kept changing it.
Although, you'll probably see that on the Zoom account, right?
That is correct.
The meeting ideas?
Yes, and I can, we can share that as well, and then, um, we just need to make sure it's plugged in, updated when it gets plugged in.
Yep. Yeah, cause what we didn't realize is, once I got there and I said, Maribor, here's the meeting ID, when we went back, it wasn't the same, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's why people were, were having a hard time at the annual town meeting, because it was like, here's the new one, we had put the regular one, but then you had to share the one that was new, and we didn't realize that that one, you know, changed every time you logged into it, like, unlike this one, that's consistent with the same.
But now it's set, so it's good, okay, so tomorrow, maybe we can get that, and then we can move on with it, so I would make a motion that we, um, authorize the acquisition of a individual Zoom license using the, um, PEG funds.
Yeah, for sure.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, police department body, body on camera policy, has everybody read this?
Yes. So I did send this to Maya, as, um, the board asked at the last meeting. They said they can certainly add the equipment to be, to the insurance added on, um, and then she referenced another person who specializes more in this, and I have not heard an input from them yet in regards to reviewing or any comments on the, um, body KMI policy. But if I recall, I know the chief said that this was, um, very detailed and worked with the.
From the executive office, supposedly. Nothing goes through them, but all legal review. I read it over, it's pretty, pretty complex, yeah.
Yes, I thought.
And I had asked the chief questions that I was concerned about, um, last week, and he answered them.
I'm fine with it.
So do we have to vote on?
We can.
That we support? I mean, he can create a policy, right?
He can create a policy, submit it to the board, if we take no action in thirty days, it goes on automatic, all we could vote on. I think to support him, we should vote in there.
I would move that we, um, accept the, uh, police chief's, um, policy, um.
Body worn camera.
Body worn camera policy, as presented.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Municipal.
So, um, I met with, uh, I communicated with two companies, Contract, which, um, CM Geeks has no personal experience with, but was aware that they were, um, someone that, uh, did work in one of their towns. Um, and I met with Phoenix, um, Communication, I met with Phoenix, I thought it was gonna be a thirty-minute ride around town, and it ended up being like a two and a half hour, um, lunch break. And my boss only, like, called and texted me three times during that, um, so, um, uh, so they both presented, um, estimates, and this is also, uh, initially, we had talked about, uh, looking at, uh, using ARPA funds, um, with no real idea of how much it would cost. So the two proposals, uh, one is a sixty-seven thousand five hundred and forty, that's Phoenix. And then the other proposal ended up being thirty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-five.
How much was the first one, I'm sorry?
Uh, sixty-seven five forty.
Forty, second, and that was Phoenix, the sixty-seven five forty?
And then, uh, thirty-nine six eighty-five was Contract. Phoenix spent two and a half hours going into every building and chasing down the wiring, um, and, um, drove through the town. Contract never came to O-Kam. And gave an estimate twenty-five thousand cheaper.
Yeah.
But is missing an engineering plan as part of it, and I, I said to Phoenix, how could a company, um, create a proposal without even stepping foot, um, in O-Kam, and he said, well, we would never do that. Um, so, how do they design, it's not, you just can't clip the fiber to the poles.
Right.
Um, so again, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples, uh, with this.
No.
Um, but, uh, Phoenix said, but why aren't you applying for the municipal fiber grant, which awards up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for communities to ensure communication internally, um, to ensure security, um, and you really should apply for this, especially a small rural community, to connect all your town buildings, and they kept on going, and what about this? I said, we don't have that, what about that? I'm like, we don't have that, we just have five buildings. Um, so, um, but, um, so they said that they felt as though, uh, we would be a prime candidate for this grant. Um, so they put everything into it, all the costs, um, including the engineering, including if National Grid and Verizon, um, charged us a purple fee. Um, we believe we have a agreement.
Well, yeah, if I can.
Did anyone ever get back to you?
Absolutely not, I spent hours just trying to get through National Grid, not only did I get disconnected several times in the transition of, let me find where you belong and click, and starting on over and giving me another phone number, and I have, and according to Phoenix, that day, if I recall correctly, they said, National Grid will be much easier to get through than Verizon, well, I haven't even tried Verizon because I'm terrified. National Grid has been awful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
They're going with who owns the poles.
Yeah, so they both own them, apparently.
With Grills.
Grays owns them a hundred percent?
There was a switch made, but ten years ago.
Yes.
Okay, cause these guys thought they were fifty percent.
Oh, cause of the, of the wires, right, the lines.
So I do have connections at National Grid.
Um, oh, great.
So, maybe we can get who, and actually, what's, uh, New Braintree just did this throughout their entire town.
Yeah, well, they don't, they seem to not know, like, anyone that I've gone and communicated with, they don't even know what the non-agreement or the fiber grant agreement is, like, I have no idea. But I'll keep trying.
So this fiber grant is due, um, April twelfth by noon. Um, all costs for, um, so, I'm gonna go back, it's for connecting remote municipal assets for the purpose of improving municipal operations and/or improving disaster recovery and resiliency within municipal government. Uh, eligible costs include one-time capital need, such as fiber optic cabling, hardware, software, and implementation services necessary to thwart the initial implementation. What's not included, the after it gets here. Um, so if we wanted to have, um, a Wi-Fi booster or something like that, cause this room sometimes, um, loses connection. A local five percent match is required, so if we did the, if, if the sixty-seven three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars out of ARPA, which is a heck of a lot less money than what I thought it was gonna be, that's like twenty thousand.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
So.
No, that'll be good.
Um. Um, I'm sure that's.
It's due in April, you're probably here by September.
You understand, I think I read somewhere August, so, um, and if we don't get it, we apply next year, I mean, at this point, we're, we're surviving, um, but it would be nice to have that continuity between our buildings, to have one server, um, not to have to buy hardware routers, uh, for every building, not to have to pay charter internet in every building, it would be one subscription, um, that could go throughout the town. Uh, the municipal buildings, and the, Phoenix also said, how come O-Kam hasn't looked at the municipal residential fiber program? I said, easy. Um, yeah, slow down. Um, but apparently, there's also grants to run fiber to municipal households that the state is trying to get people to take advantage of, especially in rural communities, and that, um, that supported, uh, New Braintree.
Right.
Oh, okay.
They did a good job.
They sure did. I mean, and they're getting speeds better than we're getting on cable. So, that could be a down-the-road thing.
Yeah.
So, um.
We'll, we'll head with the grant.
I would, yes, so I'd like to go, move ahead with the grant, provide this work with the grant writer. I mean, I can.
I can also teach it.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I could give them what I've done thus far and ask them for input, um, but I, I'm hoping that we've reduced their time to less, to an hour or less.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because I think we've gotten everything for them.
Yeah. Touches on it.
Yeah.
No, they'll be very happy to do it.
Now, do we have, can we ask for the sixty-seven thousand, or do we have to only ask for the lowest?
One is not responsive.
Well, this one that didn't even show up, but submitted a, a bid.
Not responsive.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, th- they could come out here and say, oh, it's actually gonna be thirty thousand dollars more, and we didn't get a grant to cover that.
Sure.
So, um, I think we should request the sixty-seven thousand grant. They don't give it to us, they don't give it to us.
Right.
We don't move forward this year.
Phoenix is also the subcontractor for, uh, Chuck.
Yes, yeah, they just did our roads.
Yeah.
So and um one of the people who um does it, who came out, lives in Rowland. So he's local. And he he called in this afternoon, he said, if anybody on the board has questions, he'd be happy to answer them or have his boss um answer him, but um very impressed um with their knowledge and.
Without all these routers and all these connections, we're gonna save money on that.
Yeah, we're not gonna be upgrading equipment every so many years, so that device we have to buy today, cuz it's died.
Yeah.
You have one.
Yeah. And that'll be.
Yep, everything will. So the cable, again, I learned more about this than I ever wanted to. It comes off the pole on the corner of the fire station near the or highway, near the flagpole.
Yeah.
Goes underground, comes up into um the upstairs attic. Then goes back down the tube over to the police station into the closet.
Yeah.
Um and and part of this have the racks, so nice racks on the wall, not stuff stuffed stuck on the shelf. Um all built in to to it, so that, you know, we're treating it the way it should be and.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great if we got it. And I'm optimistic. Do we have to take a vote? You said you would.
I would.
Okay, so I would move that we authorize to move forward with the grant um capital strategic on finalizing and submitting the municipal fiber grant uh in the amount of sixty seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars with a five percent matching um using ARPA funds if uh we are awarded the grant.
Second.
Well, David.
Hi.
Bye. Municipal vulnerability preparedness grant.
Um we have not received the um the final um proposal yet um from our workshop. That um the twenty twenty-four deadline to submit for an MVP grant is April twenty-fourth. The head, the the person who decides the grant was in our workshop and told us that the grant is going, I mean, the proposal is going to be approved, subject to the Board of Selectmen approving. Um but we need to get it first. So I was hoping we were gonna get it by tonight. So we need to, in hopes of getting it at the next meeting. And what we did in that workshop was we came up with potential projects.
Mm-hmm.
Um and CM RPC has been applying for these grants for years. So they would be the grant writer as part of this. There's no extra charge.
Yeah.
So submitting our first grant would be them and they know it would be due by April twenty-fourth.
Okay, so we're waiting for the proposal.
We're waiting for the CM RPC.
Workshop.
And I did email um.
Julia?
Yes, more. Um and I did not hear back. Um so.
Cuz they contacted me about other projects and I'm and I I couldn't at that time to have to call in that sense of uh so I said I would follow up with them, maybe some time this week, but.
They emailed us today about the outdoor part, like recreation stuff.
Maybe that's what it was.
Um so they did email us today on that. So we don't have anything to to vote on, but they mentioned having a hearing. So I asked, what does that mean? Does it mean a two-week in the newspaper hearing or is it just a meeting? So that's what I'm waiting to hear on. Because if it's a hearing, then that's.
And that's how, pretty much.
Well, we have until the twenty-fourth, so it'll be really close.
It would be.
But if they, if CM RPC knows that we haven't gotten it, maybe they'd be able to get it in by the the twenty-fourth. But we would have to, we would have until next week to get it in the newspaper, to have two weeks before we could then have a hearing on the.
I wonder if it is a hearing or just a.
On April, we have until April sixteenth to vote on it in a meeting. If it were, if it had to be hearing, it could be in the fifth newspaper and the twelfth newspaper. Um and then the following Monday would be the hearing, which then gives them a week and a half.
Yeah.
To submit the the grant. So I'll know more once they're responded.
Okay. It was a very good meeting Saturday.
It was. I mean, lots of different ideas and um everybody was thinking outside the box and
They were.
by now like, oh, we could do something like that.
We have the buyer's cyber liability.
In the midst of all the people.
Yep, I know. What happened to all this blowing our paper?
We're gonna get a grant uh between Saturday and. Environmental.
All these paperwork just let the landlord save me. So this is the um Maya Cyber Liability Renewal Application needs to be completed and returned before or by April first, which we already in um enrolled in the cyber coverage, but this is just the renewal.
This is the renewal, yeah.
You want to have that to answer, you can put that just. I typically fill it out and have signed it, but like to uh make sure that I get the authorization of the full board to make sure everyone's uh okay with that.
You will fill this out?
I have before, yes. With with Maya, like I will in 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 Paul, yes. Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, but it takes some village, like I'll send it to Paul, he'll do this portion, I'll do what I have to fill out or at least sign and Joanne, who is I wrapped, will do, you know, coach through. I mean.
Yeah, antivirus.
Yeah. A lot of it is IT.
It's all IT.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Has it changed at Ocam last year? Yeah. It looks like. So what I would do is I would send it to Paul as a fellow, he would um fill in what his and the IT stuff.
Yeah.
I like that page. Yeah, last year we were in a crunch, cuz we had to have the two-factor
Oh, education.
to be um eligible. And although at the time of the renewal last year, we didn't have it, they were okay with as long as we had it before the end of the fiscal year. So we had to make sure that happened, so. Should be easy this year.
I would move that we approve the submission of the Cyber Liability Renewal Application that Maribel will work with um the subject matter experts in completing and submitting.
Second.
Bye.
Bye. Is the board already doing business?
I would like to uh review an email that we received from uh an eighth grader at Quabin, um Kingston McKenzie, who is part of part of Project Three Fifty-One. Um every city and town selects one youth in eighth grade to work on issues um that are important to them. Um she says, my group and I would like to schedule a clothing drive at the Ocam Town Hall in Ocam. Um I drove up there today and was told to email you and receive permission to continue our drive. All we need to do is leave a box at the Town Hall on March twenty-sixth, and then I'll pick it up on April second. Sorry for the late email. Send it at eight forty-seven, should've been asleep. Um so um Project Three Fifty-One, my daughter was a representative two years ago. Um and it's a great program and uh it teaches kids how to be involved in their community. And I think if there was a box in our, out there somewhere, it wouldn't impact anything and be good to support.
Toys for Tots kind of thing.
And and he may even consider maybe the library as an option that is open more hours than than we are. I know I have two big bags that I plan on driving to his house. Um not putting in that.
He doesn't give any specifics of what does there.
No, no, it just says a clothing drive.
Is he gonna send out flyers to people or notify uh the people in town that this is going to be held here? He would need probably more than one box.
Mm-hmm.
When we did a coke drive, just a coke drive.
Yeah, he wants to do it tomorrow.
We ended up with many.
So I mean, certainly, he, his parent or us posting clothing drive, whatever he tells us, I'm sure we could get out there on social media.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ask him to give us what he wants.
We could put a box here and in the.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, it would be just probably easier for people to get to.
I'd be happy to reach out to him and reach out to the library to see if they'd be open to it.
Yeah.
I think my question is, the clothing, good shape?
For, yeah.
Clean or brand new? I mean, whatever they would like.
That was all I had for new business.
Okay.
Listen, you don't have any more good ones?
I was going to say something, but you kept on talking, so I can sit, but that's all right. I just wanted to notify that I did do the webinar on digitizing the town reports you happened to walk through as I was finishing up, saying you would not believe what this entails. And to look at where we have stored everything upstairs is nothing
I know.
compared to everything we, I saw in that one.
A wealthy community out east.
It was unbelievable, boxes upon boxes in the police station, in the fire station, in the town hall, in the library, in all their little satellite buildings in the town. They had to go through every single one of them. And none of them looked as neat as our room upstairs.
It's not digitized, though.
And what they had, it took them years. And they're still working on it. Then they had to have huge buildings in which to store, once they're all categorized by department, by name, by title, shelving units in all these buildings spread out through the town. I'm saying, we don't have enough buildings and space in town to store everything. It was, but it was very eye-opening. It was very interesting to see. I'm still gonna try it with the cemetery.
Nice.
I think that would be the easiest apartment to work with and then work our way through if we want anything else digitized, but I'm gonna keep that on our plan.
Yeah, I mean, the Board of Health went digital January twenty twenty. Um everything electronic, we're not, we're not saving anything paper. It's all, it's received electronically or it's scanned.
Right.
Um so we, I mean, just with the workforce, you you have to have more flexibility and access.
I mean, they had boxes that were just tossed into a corner, not up, you know, upside down, sideways. Um and then they worked towards that or away from it.
Were you not in the attic where you opened the door? There were like fifteen boxes on the floor on their side. At least now they're on the stage.
Stage, yeah. But you have to go through all those boxes and.
Yes, that's why it's not done.
Little titles and everything, yeah. It would be a lot of fun to try to do it.
I don't know that we need to digitize anything. We don't need to legally keep.
That was one of the first things you had to decide for yourself when you went through all the boxes and everything is what is really necessary to keep? What isn't? And they said, they have many, many truckloads of things they did not keep.
Yeah.
They said it wasn't necessary for the town. Why keep it when you don't have to have it?
Yeah.
So they did get through an awful lot. But it was just unbelievable when I saw the amount of work. But like you said, they're a bigger town than we are, but I I just get picturing our little room upstairs and I say, we're not so bad at that, but it could be done. But it it will take years if we do it per by department. It would take a long time. And then you have to be careful because even though they're digitized, they do fade.
Oh, yeah.
And so every, they said every twenty-five years, you need a group to go through them all again to make sure they're still in good condition. But it was just, it was kind of fun to watch what one town went through to do it.
Oh, yeah. That was worse than we were.
That was worse than we are.
That's good.
There's always someone worse.
Full business.
Um so I did um we we do have an estimate um for um email, SharePoint and Office Three Sixty-Five. Um and I did get a um for the next fiscal year, I I, which unfortunately begins in May, or the next contract is I think in May.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I think that's when we did it last year.
Yeah, it's too bad they can't do like a a two-month thing or something.
I bet they they prob-, I mean, that's what happened with Springbrough, where it was built in April.
Mm-hmm.
So what they did was they built from April to June thirtieth, one portion. And then the other portion started for July first, and that's when it fell through and we had to have it at the special town meeting, just because we were trying to straighten it out and put it on the fiscal year that matched, you know, the town versus, but anyhow.
So I have a list from CN Geeks of who has access to what. Um and um with, if if we go forward with revise or um I will say revise is is better on the um Intranet um as well. Um but if we go with one of them, they both have the option of Intranet. You wouldn't need access to SharePoint for everybody. Um we wouldn't be paying for it. It's built in. It's it's no extra cost. Um so I, we got an estimate based upon what we did in January, I think, to give twenty-five people SharePoint.
Yeah.
We can bring that down really to one person per department. Um and so I I am gonna work on putting that together for next week um to maybe get to CM Geeks what we would like them to uh update our proposed um next contract um for email, SharePoint and Office Three Sixty-Five.
Yeah, it's because I think, I mean, it would make sense, especially if it's not being used and you're paying for it. Um yeah, why not?
Yeah, and that way we're not having to just give them an email because we want them to have access to SharePoint. We can put all of the forms, all the policies on the Internet um for people to access without having to pay. But it is, there is good to having department have forms on SharePoint.
Yeah.
Oh, I think so too. Definitely, I just.
But not the frontline employee, he doesn't need that.
Yeah.
The next week.
So next meeting.
What do you have next news?
Uh the um the IT uh estimate. Um the next thing is Harper's. So as we know, um the treasurer and accountant have been working on Harper's, the um uh web uh pay um, which is time and attendance, which would allow employees to enter their time, have a supervisor sign off on it. Um and then it be submitted to the treasurer, who then does a quality control check, who then can print out a report and send it to the accountant. Um so we have something like eighty-seven quote employees, but that includes stipend people. So they're really, they're technically an employee, but they're not filling out payroll. Um and if you add in and then you have, so you take out maybe twenty people who are stipend, and then you add in um the fire department, the per diem highway guys who plow, um it'd be about sixty. You take out police, fire, highway. It goes down to twenty-one people. So it's library, town hall employees, treasurer, town clerk, assessor, um library, the police chief, the highway superintendent, the highway department, the full-time people.
Okay.
It's twenty-one people, which is about eight hundred and eighty dollars a year um to have the time and attendance option um for um those twenty-one people. The estimate of the four thousand increase. The estimate of the four thousand increase in the budget was if we had everybody use time and attendance. Now, right now, employees don't have the ability to go online and look up their paycheck. They only have a piece of paper that we pay twenty five dollars to have shipped to us every week and then a per unit. For every piece of paper that's printed. Even people who have direct deposit were still printing and they have no access. There's a a separate option, which is employee forward, which is just twenty five cents per person. Per month. Which is like peanuts. That would give the other sixty people the option to see their. It would give everybody the option to see all of their previous paychecks. They could get their W two online, the previous W twos online. So it would be less than a thousand dollars to have either access to. The seeing their checks or submitting their their time sheets, well below the proposed four thousand. And she did meet with, she and the accountant met for two weeks in a row now. And I believe there's a planned follow up this week, this Friday. And she and I put together a spreadsheet, which I did share, just for your information, who those twenty one people are. The company needed to know who would be approving. So behind the scenes, they're building. The approval process. But additionally, because I can always say more, everybody. Would be able to put their demographic information, change their address, update their, you know, their dependents, their exemptions. Whether they're on the the time card or not. So it's not a piece of paper. It can be all electronic. And then we actually would have a repository of emergency contacts and stuff that we don't have. So I think we had said originally that we authorized the treasurer to work on it. I think that continues and if she she believed that there was no reason to have everybody, including. The intermittent firefighters that do call, the intermittent police officers to do details. Let them continue to do paper. Because it's not regular. That volume is cut down significantly. Have everybody who's regularly submitting. And then we're keeping track of the benefits, the PTO. Yeah, the fire police don't have it. I did suggest she send us an email just updating on where she was at, but she said things are moving forward.
And who would be determining or how would it be determined on how many hours you're eligible for vacation? If I'm a thirty hour employee versus somebody who's fifteen hours, you know, I know that that was.
Yeah, so and that's.
So it has to come from us.
So we're gonna. Was that, you know, if we go with a shared services. Between us and that person, we'd be able to populate. What each, because you really, when you give an offer, you're saying you are eligible for this. And so I think we have to look at the bylaws and hopefully we can address that. But it might need to be until July first and then after July first. And you guys are comfortable with only doing the twenty one, the people who are regularly paid.
Regularly, the people who work regular every week, yes. Because they're the ones that have.
And are you comfortable with the twenty five cents times fifty times twelve? Twenty twenty five times fifty. Hundred fifty dollars to give access to their historical pay stops. You know, somebody needs to have their last four pay stops when they get a refinance or a mortgage. It's all online. So we give that to everybody. Well below the four thousand. I did. Yeah, I think, I think people in town should watch it.
I think everybody should watch it. There was a presentation in Brooklyn on the same thing, but it really went into it for pincom. And you know how they're talking about the cost of living? That's not the federal cost of living. They have their own way of figuring cost of living within that budget. Not the school state. And was three point two with social security this year? It's more like five point five when they figure it into the school budget, the state level.
The thing that I didn't understand was the minimum municipal contribution. And so before the school even has a chance to say, we gotta divvy up this because of our values. So it's not all the school saying here, it's it's a formula. And then they gotta distribute the rest of it. So it was, it was eye opening.
I I just think it's interesting that they went to such great detail every forum, but two and a half is two and a half.
And that's why I think there's now talk of that needing to be reformed.
It's about time.
Yeah, you just can't do it.
No, not at all. Do I say something? Two and a half includes new growth.
But it's not a lot.
If you don't have any new growth.
For us it has, but in the past, we've had some pretty good increases because we always estimate very low. But then what you have to do is at the end of the year, you have to go back and say, what was?
You're right. The new growth goes on top of the two and a half. I get that.
And that becomes your baseline for two and a half to fall with.
One of the things we have not been doing was going to the whole two and a half.
Right, we haven't. You know, if you don't, you don't lose anything. No, you don't, because it's a theoretical two and a half. So your theoretical two and a half is not dependent upon what you raise your taxes by. Your theoretical two and a half is based upon the prior year theoretical two and a half.
If we were giving up fifty four thousand dollars a year for the past five years, isn't that a quarter of a million dollars that we're not raising?
Not giving it up. Because your two and a half is not based on what you have actually taxed. It's theoretical what you could have taxed.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So. What you're saying, yes, you you could have gone up to two and a half. And and but in terms of being able to tax in the future, you haven't given anything up. You have given up that yearly, yes. And I used to tell Donna Kucha when she would ask me. How do you want to handle this on pincom? I would say kill all the way two and a half, all the way two and a half.
Right, no, I I agree with you. That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
But but what if, let's say we go all the way, you know, leaving a little bit for breathing breathing room. But is that become a future, is that a bigger tax increase for people to see? But we, I think that's where I think people need to understand where we have been. For a lot of years and then we just can't afford to continue to stay at that level. Continue to go up.
If you didn't go the two and a half, then the following year, that's why I would say when. There would be presentations saying we can only go up two and a half and I would say, well, no, you you don't. If you don't go all the way two and a half, the next year you may be going up three. If you add on new growth, it could be four, four and a half, and then new growth gets added on. And we really low vaulting growth.
Yeah, that's true.
And that was the protected free cash. Because Diane was laughing because that's how we protected.
But we had very healthy free cash coming back, almost a half a million dollars.
That is very unusual. That was unusual. Usually it was like a hundred fifty. Yeah, for many, many years.
I think it's the last three or four, has been between four and five hundred.
The other thing that you manage is you manage this couple of things. You manage your local revenue too. So, you know, you can say to the state, we're going to your local revenue, we're gonna estimate it up three and a half percent. Because if you go to five, you have to justify it and have it approved by the state. But if our local revenue was increasing, and then our local revenue is the tax money that we get from the state for our watershed property.
A hundred fifty thousand.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand, but it goes up.
Like two thousand dollars.
Every two years, but it can never go down.
But there's a pilot right now, which is going to charge a tax on those people out there to pay us more money.
That, yes, but the state, but the the point still is. You're getting still state money and plus your own local revenue, the excise and taxes. So we always low vault that. And that's why your free cash is protected.
Did you see that? Speaker of the House spoke about this and he supported the local option, which I don't support. Just for the record. But to allow us to. Increase the. Excise tax. Yeah, we'll let towns get more money. Yeah, who's gonna do that? I mean, there's even some pretty progressive towns that are like, yeah, we're not gonna do that. But they do have the ability to increase the the food tax, which we don't have.
We don't have, or hotels.
But there is, I mean, the elderly consumption of.
We don't, which we don't have, right?
The way the person vehicles has gone up, your excise tax, they're already exploding.
I I I definitely think we should be looking at the local abatement options. Because seniors are being pushed out of communities.
Absolutely.
And so we we should come up with an option to allow them to stay age in place. Because if we don't, these properties are going to be sold. And then people will be complaining that we don't want developments, because there are some properties that pretty easily become developments.
There are some good things, a lot of things that do us actually need more growth.
You know, I go get the money for the watershed. Actually comes based upon the assessors, the figures from the assessors. Now it's based upon durable laws. There aren't any rules. It's not very meaningful.
But O Cam rural communities get less money and pilot money per acre. Than places east of four ninety five.
Are we surprised? We got more votes east of four ninety five.
They do. But we're making noise. Don't listen to us.
I do, if I may. Just want to inform the board that we have received another application for the highway superintendent. I also listed the position on Indeed and received a couple interested candidates on there. I just replied, thank you so much. Look forward to the board's luck and proceed from there. They weren't as local, but on the job description, it doesn't give a radius. So, at least the address was Franklin and Orange, but there are two. And the gentleman who, the first applicant that moved back from Benton. Local, just followed up again, very intrigued, very interested and.
And he's moving to where?
He didn't tell me the town. He said within not even ten minutes.
It could be several towns then, but.
Yeah, I I mean, I didn't ask, what's your address? Where are you?
At least he's interested in moving, or he is planning on moving. Or he's already moved down, so.
So just wanted to say that.
He would be an active participant then.
Yep, and that, that one has great credentials and it's not too far either, has a lot of experience.
And I mean, we we just happen to have had people who lived in Oakham. I mean, that's not a job requirement. So.
Being up in New Hampshire.
I was suspecting that person was gonna move here. Because who'd wanna commute an hour every?
An hour and a half, solid.
We just wish he had said that in his first application.
He did communicate it, has followed through and keeps, you know, has asked, wanted to know.
Especially when Brookfield has a position as well. I I noticed that on Indeed, Brookfield is hiring. A little bit more than we are, but paying a little bit more than we are.
And there's two applicants for, one submitted a full application with the resume. Maybe just an application for assistant town clerk. The per diem kind of position. And then another to yesterday or today, I think today. Submitted a resume. I don't know if this one is local, this one is local. And I will forward her email. I should have done that earlier, just because she has some information of her credentials on the email. The local one.
With administrative experience.
I know that in the, I think I have four or five questions on Indeed. For like requirements, you know, do you have a C V, a class B or C D L B? Do you have the warrior lift license? Do you have any experience with DOT? One of them had everything. One had almost everything. Experience with DOT per se, but all the other requirements. I just would need, you know, advisement from the board on how you would like to proceed in regards to. You know, rather questioning or interviews.
I think we should set up interviews as soon as possible.
Absolutely. Pretty well said on Mondays for budgets, right?
Although next week or. Are we done with all the boards and committees?
I believe we are.
For the individual one, that one's.
There'll be some final touch, final touch, ditch touches done. Yeah.
I think they want a couple departments to come back in.
They should. They should be talking to something by now.
And then they also want the school department to come in.
When are they coming in?
It's up to us.
Why is that they had set a date for coming in on a Wednesday so that they can get both of us together?
No, I think Ellen had suggested preferably on a Wednesday because of their schedule, but I don't think it's.
Do that as soon as we can.
I can do any Wednesday in the next few weeks.
I think there's only one though next week.
One Wednesday? Can we jam another one in? Come on.
You want to try quickly, don't you?
The Wednesdays are good for me.
Which Wednesday?
The third or the tenth, whatever works for.
Want to try for the third?
I will schedule that. I will not be in a kind of step when it is my daughter's birthday. She will be very upset if I miss her birthday.
Okay.
So that will be a joint meeting with FinCom?
Yeah.
With FinCom.
And this is for budget, right?
Is that for the school? Assuming they can come.
Wow, okay. Yeah, so that's.
School and departments. And just the board's selection, yeah.
Yeah. Because we are going to have to. Meet with FinCom again with department heads or just on the entire budget to be sure we all agree on everything. Before it actually goes to print.
Yeah, so Mondays and Wednesdays are are good for me.
Cause I'm pretty sure they're gonna have to see the highway retire maybe again.
So with that meeting with FinCom and department heads, does that mean that's what we know what budget is going to be put on to via warrant? And that's how we find out what our budgets are, what it be affected.
And I I like how FinCom has had, they have a running one with everything in the one page.
Yeah, they've done a good job.
So. And we still have to meet to talk about the salaries.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I gave.
Yeah, so that would be after.
The third or before on Monday's meeting.
I think we should discuss this Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, we're prepared.
Yeah, yeah. And then they'll screen that.
Well, yes and no. Things can be cut, you know.
Yeah.
You can't take care of the raises and take care of all of the staffing in one year, that's not gonna happen. So we need to focus. We're behind in the wages, we we need to focus there, we're behind in staffing in this building, in the library, we gotta focus there. You know, the other departments, we get to them. But. Any of those is gonna create an override. So.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
And that was a question that I had is, could you do an override for the school budget?
Yeah.
What you would have to do is split the school budget into, first of all, you'd have to vote. On mandatory contributions because you can't.
You have to.
Not pay the state.
Right.
Be in all kinds of trouble. And if you wanna do an override, you can do an override on on the assessment.
Okay.
I just wondered if that was a way. To get the people. To support the municipal and make their voice heard on the um, the school.
Yeah, but eventually this is gonna have to happen.
Right.
Where you can only take in with new growth and two and a half, hundred twenty five grand, and the school comes in at a hundred and forty four, we're in trouble. People have to understand that, and we're dipping into free cash to balance the budget, which we should not be doing.
We should not be doing that, but as the state said, virtually every town does.
Oh, every town does.
We do it, but it's not. And they always say you shouldn't, but because once again, it's a variable.
Right.
But it's, anyway, people can do it.
Soft money.
Yeah.
But the time is coming, we're not even gonna be able to do that.
Worcester is, they're trying to, they're gonna cut twenty million, I think, in their school budget. I mean, all all these towns around, they're already saying that their costs are just skyrocketing, how are towns gonna be able to afford it?
Out of curiosity, I used to keep a spreadsheet that showed year to year proposed local revenue, actual local revenue. So you could see in what direction you were going in, but what's going, what are you going on?
DLS has that.
Yeah, it's, that's.
I love that website.
That's right, DLS has everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's where I used to get it from. So have you been tracking how your uh, local revenues were?
I did.
Take a look at that.
I I I had looked at it like months ago and I just could get lost in it.
Yeah.
So.
And the other thing was, like I had said before, if we needed money, two things we used to do them. One, the assessors would let us know if they give a piece overlay money. Which I guess not, hasn't been asked for a while, if you've been loving it. The other is when we went to the school, we would say, okay, we're gonna be X amount of money short. So what's gonna happen? Because that March twenty third budget is pretty useless.
True.
But it's, they have to come out with a budget, they come out with a budget, that's not.
But that's their third go of it.
Yeah, and they may be going again.
So how many people have, how many towns have to vote?
Three, right.
Only three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Right, so three vote now, then it.
Right.
Goes to uh. Is that what it is?
One twelve.
One twelve.
A one twelve block.
If it's three vote now.
Yeah.
Until it gets straightened.
They hope that we all will have another.
Oh, oh, if if they, if you vote it down, then they'll go back to the planning table again. If at the point they say we can do no more, then the state comes in.
Right.
And they say what the school wanted.
They'll stay, they'll say what is a fair budget.
They're not required to lower the budget, even if it goes back to them, okay, they can still just send you the same budget right back and that's happened to us.
Yes.
And until it's decided finally, then it's one twelve.
Yeah, one, okay, that's what I meant. So much to learn.
But that's where I think us engaging, and and I wanna clarify, it's not about transparency, it's about engaging. Engaging the community, giving them information that they wouldn't.
They don't know.
They don't know, there's so much education we can do that I've learned in the last eight months that um, really enlightened me.
I think that it worked well for us to be able to talk to the school openly and and say, okay, we've done our budget. This is where we are and go through the figures with them and say, we're short, this is how much we're short. You know, and then the school would say, okay, let's work on this, you know, but at least then they knew where we were coming from and they had something concrete to work with.
I think she said, she did say that they expected it would probably change again.
Yeah.
So.
It'll be changing all the way up until April twenty fifth.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it doesn't go up, it usually comes down, so it always comes down.
So moving forward with the interviews. Um, you guys will discuss that maybe next meeting order.
When is the deadline?
I didn't put it down.
There wasn't one.
Oh, there is.
Until Phil.
Yeah, we can just start doing it.
Okay.
It is.
You wanna do highway and town clerk on the same day?
Yeah.
A day, an afternoon of interviews?
Yeah.
Yes.
Friday after.
Well, we only have one town clerk, right?
Nope.
Interview.
Two.
Two town clerks.
It's for assistant town clerk, like the per diem, two.
Okay, and then we have all the others.
I have one, two, three. Um, applicants, that indeed ones, I mean, I I will reach out and.
Okay, yeah, I would definitely let them know where.
Let them know, but I mean. I mean, at this point, can't they know because of their.
Yeah.
Location because it wasn't identified in the review or a radius of.
So we actually have five?
Well, there, there, yeah, those two, two of them were interested, so yeah, but I had three physically. Three physical applicants, yeah.
So maybe the highway alone would take up a half a day.
That's what I'm thinking.
And the town clerk is less of a emergency.
Can't do that on a separate day?
Right, right, yeah.
Fifth, fourth.
Another question, will Anna stay until you get another town clerk?
She's, she's got plans.
Yeah. She said as of May twenty, she's done.
So, um, sorry, April fifth for highway. Applicants, and can you please give me timeframes of how long and what time do you wanna start?
We noon and four. I mean, because they they might all say they can't start until one, so. One, two, three, four, that's four, if they were, I don't think they're gonna need to be an hour.
Did that gonna be an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, did.
Five minutes in between.
Ten minutes, no.
You think twenty five minutes? An interview?
But we could always have second interviews.
Yeah, we can have second.
Oh, I'm just going based on like prior interviews that were, you know, a little like, depends on how much a person talks.
We we should come up with questions.
Yes. I know, okay.
Yeah.
So twenty five minutes to have our interviews.
Yep.
Thirty minutes, I think so.
I have a few questions.
Starting at noon time?
Noon to four, yes.
With five minutes in between?
Yep, yep, okay. I I assume uh, it would, um, are we gonna ask the highway superintendent to be present? Or would we ask him to offer uh, questions that he thinks would be important?
That would be what I would suggest. So I think we should ask him for his input, yes, his questions, yes, does he have to be present? I'll leave it up, vote of the board.
Nobody knows.
It's right. I think his input is important. Uh, he may have questions like, okay, you've got this culver and that, what would you prioritize? Um, he's gonna have real life experience um, in Oakham. Maybe in rural communities where somebody else might not have that rural experience because they've got. All these other departments helping, but you're it, you're.
That's.
You're plowing and you're cutting trees and.
Doing everything.
Yeah, so ask them for any, for his input slash questions that he could provide to the board for the interview.
Yeah. Hopefully, may maybe by next Wednesday. So that we have a couple of days to prepare based upon his.
And that way, if you know his questions, you kind of know what an expected answer or.
Yep.
A satisfying answer should be.
Oh, yeah. Is that, that job description's posted now, it must be, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's on the um, website, I'll email it to you guys on the. Tab.
And then do we wanna go ahead and attempt to schedule those two uh, clerk? Because we might have more clerks, we, cause you got two just in a matter of the weekend.
Yeah, um, one late last week and then I think one today.
So then do the same thing on the twelfth?
Let's make that decision Monday, I'll actually get some more this week.
Um, you'll let them know that we received their.
I did, I, well, I replied to the first one. Um, the local.
Yep.
Data that, you know, I will forward it to the board and keep her updated, how you would like to proceed, and then I will email the second applicant tomorrow morning.
I think there's an, you can even do like an auto response.
But those were emailed right to me.
Oh, okay, but indeed you can do the auto response, if you figure out the issue.
Yeah, I already replied to them, just say thank you, I'll keep you posted, just, you know, go, let the board know. If they have any municipal experience, they would understand that, you know, pass it along to the board.
And they should know that it's gonna be in a public meeting and, cause actually the library asked. Um, if they had to post their meeting, and I said, if your, if your board is meeting, it's a public meeting.
And I have.
The executive session is only for screening.
Yeah. Screen.
No, it's the interview.
Going right into the interview.
Yeah.
And I will also let them know, just like I did with the prior interviews for the accountant and town clerk desk. Interviews will be logged, zoomed and recorded and uploaded to YouTube and all of them.
Open to the public, but with no public comment.
Right, right. So the public can't interview them?
No.
Because we don't wanna get sued. It's really the reason. What do you mean, you don't live in Oakham, not a job requirement?
Yeah.
There's worse things they could ask, but I want easy.
We put that in for the twelfth? For the town clerk?
Monday, which is Sunday.
Okay.
Just to see how many more we get this week.
Okay.
If there's only the two, it should be easy.
Yeah, it should be easy.
Yeah. It should still.
Yeah, that that would be definitely fifteen minutes to thirty minute interviews, I think.
Yeah, it it shouldn't be too bad. We would wanna have somebody in place though before the town election, wouldn't we? To help us.
Yeah, so if we, if we did it on the twelfth, potentially the twenty sixth. Or the, that they'd be starting.
I don't know, it depends. I mean, if they need to get, well, no, it's.
That's two weeks, yeah.
I wouldn't think that it's like.
Right, it's per diem.
But yet again, it's per diem, but depends on if they do have another job, let's just say, and they work days, they can't come.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
There is flexibility once you're on your own, but if you need to be under someone's wing or be taught something, they need to work around. The current in terms of clerk's scheduling.
If we're gonna have to be, we should also put on that possible vote.
Yes.
Otherwise you have to wait.
Possible vote for. Oh, for the twelfth?
On both of them? For highway possible vote on the fifth and twelfth possibly.
We're both on the twelfth, we're both for the highway.
On the twelfth, okay. Yeah, yeah, cause that's a bigger.
Yeah.
And who knows, you might guess want you to do round two interviews.
That's right, that's all, and um. Contract negotiation would be an executive session with some, one of them potentially. And while I've had the finance committee meeting, have a little understanding of where we might be able to go.
Well, we already advertised them.
Yep, yep, we might find that. Yeah. Say we're not doing that. I move with your turn.